This is also webcast, so you need to be on the car. Yes, so there's a chap down there who should be able to get the slides for you. If you want to have a quick word with him, and then away you go. Thank you, thank you all, ladies and gentlemen. If you could please take your seats, and we've got our presentation from Rose Garden Cafe. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you. Thank you all, thank you all very much indeed. I've got Chris Hallam, who's come to talk to us about the Rose Garden Cafe. I would say if we could stop all of the conversations, especially over there. I may have to go, can you not hear me? Crikey. Almost, okay, thank you all very much, ladies and gentlemen. And thank you all especially for your help with your input into that. I would say we've now got a presentation about the Rose Garden Cafe from Chris Hallam, the independent chair, if you want to hand over to you, thank you very much.
Good evening, everybody, thank you for giving me the chance to just give you an update on the Rose Garden Cafe partnership. I don't know how much you know, so I thought I'd just kind of walk you through what we are and who we are and what we're doing, is that okay? So the Rose Garden Cafe partnership born out of, I guess, I reckon conflict is probably the right way to put it. The city council noticed that the wall on the front of the Rose Garden Cafe was leaning, and it was deemed to be dangerous, and it was kind of closed down quite quickly. And then there was a campaign led by the Friends of Grace Park and the Save the Rose Garden Cafe campaign, when 11,500 people signed a petition to save it. And on the back of that, the council and the members of the partnership, so the Save the Rose Garden campaign, Friends of Grace Park and City Council got around a table and created a group, and I chair that group. The journey's been a fascinating one, I think, for us as a group of individuals. I think it's fair to say, and there are some members of the partnership here, and they could speak probably better than I can about it, that there were some very severe challenges around getting even common ground at the beginning of that partnership. But where we are now, we all feel like we're in a space where we are applying for funding to restore that cafe. So that journey's been an interesting one for all the individuals. Can we move the slide on? You'll have seen, if those of you that have seen the part, will see there's still scaffolding outside it, and that's because the wall is falling down, and we definitely need to do something about that. We've had lots of survey work done, which through the partnership we've funded through fundraising, through donations from local councils, and the city council have also done a lot from their repairs and maintenance budget. We are raising, we need to raise about, well, it depends on the estimates, I guess. We probably need to raise certainly more than £100,000 as a contribution towards restoring that cafe. The cost that we've seen from the plan that we are working on with our design team might be about £2 million, could it? It's a crazy amount of money, isn't it, when you think about it? It will give us an amazing building that will last for a long, long time, and that will be a heritage restoration, that will be restoring the look and feel of the outside, certainly the outside of the building, and having a transformed space on the inside. So there are lots of ex have a sustainable future. That's one of the things that I think is most important that we do, is that we help whoever's going to take that on after us, to see how that is managed as an asset for the city for the next 100 years. Next year it'll be 100 years old. We'd really like to have it restored by then, I'm looking at Becky as our project manager. I've no idea whether that's possible, but I'd really like it to be done by then, because that would be incredible. But one of the things I think the city has to figure out is how does it sustain a legacy for an asset in a park or all of our green spaces going forward? They're incredibly valuable to us, the parks, that was certainly what we were talking about on our table. And we need to find a way of making sure that the same thing doesn't happen down the road that happened into that building. And it's not easy, it's not easy to figure out how to do that, so if anybody's got any suggestions, then email me. So yeah, the public consultation showed us a few things that I think anybody that knows the park might have been aware of. Almost all the postcodes across the city said they'd been to the park and used it, from Stockbridge Valley out into Derbyshire, regularly used it. So it's easy to think that one of the parks around the corner is just used by the people who walk their dog there every morning, that's not the case. I'm sure if that's the case for Grace Park, it's the case for a lot of our other parks. This is a resource across the city. That certainly came out. And apart from restoring the heritage feel of the building, one of the themes that came through were community groups being able to use it, and it being a space for communities to use, that's one of the things that we're wrestling with at the minute in the design. So here's the public consultation results, 1,500 responses, oh, it's 41 out of the 45 postcodes. And actually, the cafe was seen as being one of the most important reasons for coming to the park, it's a destination for people to come. I don't think there's anything else really that I wanted to say, other than we're now in the phase where we are about to see the solutions that have been presented by the design team, so we'll have an actual drawing of what it's going to look like with all the materials and the costing and all that stuff, which means we can go to a funder. And we've already started to have conversations through the Friends of Grace Park's links with the Heritage Lottery Fund, we've started to have conversations with them about how we might fund that restoration going forward. That's not by no means guaranteed, we may have to look elsewhere. So we're getting to the point where the rubber hits the road, we'll know in the next six months whether we can do this or not, because we'll know in the next six months whether anybody's prepared to fund it. But what we do know is local people are prepared to put their hands in their pockets, because our fundraising, it's fifteen and a half car, I'm sorry, that's still over 14,000. See, this is the kind of challenge that I face as the chair, fifteen and a half thousand, that's all small donations, some of those donations, 10, 15, 20 pounds, and some, you know, we have had a couple of larger ones. So I think we've got any questions or anything that you want to ask about the cafe and the partnership, yes? We're working within the existing footprint by and large, depends on the exact plan. One of the challenges of the cafe is that the kitchen is really not fit for purpose, and there are some little sort of spaces at the back where we might be able to just expand slightly to get a better spacing for the kitchen, but predominantly, yes, we're working in the footprint of the cafe. Yeah. Great, well, I think that's it, thank you very much indeed for that presentation, thank you all, thank you very, very much indeed for that, and for your hard work with the Rose Garden Cafe. So we're heading on with the kind of bit more formal part of the meeting. Have we had any apologies for absences, had councillor Thornton?
And councillor Rowe.
Thank you, and there are no items that require exclusion of press or public. Are there any members who wish to declare an interest in any of the items of business on the agenda? Looking around, can't see any, that's great, that's done. And then we're moving on to item seven, which is the budget report from Dave.
Thanks Chair, so quite a quick budget report tonight, but just one additional thing that I'm going to mention in terms of what's on the slide. So just to give you a very quick overview, if we have the next slide please, thank you, we have a £100,000 budget for the Lack area. The councillors have already made two decisions about how that's going to be used within the council year. The first is to split the budget 25,000 per ward, and the second was to agree at our last public meeting to increase the delegation for decisions outside of the meeting like this to £10,000, just to enable us to be a bit more flexible in making decisions and not having to wait for a public meeting to do that. So there's a few things that I need to report back, and then just one extra item that's not on the slide. So these are some things that have been agreed under the officer delegation since the last meeting to make you aware of. All of the four wards in the south have agreed to continue funding cost of living advice sessions. What that means is in each of the four wards, there are two sessions per week offering advice to people about support with their incomes and trying to make sure that people particularly get everything that they're entitled to. In two of the wards, we've agreed other specific things, within this ward, within Grace Park, further £10,000 for the work that's taking place to improve the High Street, and then £5,000 in Gladeus Valley Ward to support the work of the Holy Cross Food Bank. So as you can see there, there's a kind of a status position as we are in terms of funds that have been spent and the funds that are remaining, and we will come back to you at each meeting, so you can get that sense of the balance, what's been agreed, what things have been agreed outside of the meeting. The other thing that I would like to add to that, having spoken to the Netheredge and Sharrow councillors, is what they are minded to do with their current £20,000 balance is to focus on local parks improvements within the ward. So that is something that we would like to ask the area committee as a whole to agree tonight, and then what we would do as with other items of spend is to bring more specific details back to a future meeting. So everything there is for noting Chair, other than the request that we make that formal allocation to Netheredge and Sharrow for parks improvements.
Okay, so I'm looking for agreement from my colleagues, nods all round, that is the usual sign, thank you very much indeed. So item number eight is minutes of the previous meeting, if I could just ask members to approve as a correct record, the minutes of the last meeting held on the 1st of October 2024, I'm looking for nods again, thank you very much indeed. So we're on to the final item of business, which is public questions and petitions. We've not received any questions in advance of the meeting. When you do ask your question, can I ask that you do use a microphone for the benefit of the webcast? Please clearly state your name and which area you're from, if we're unable to answer any questions on the night, we will provide a written response, in which case, obviously, can you leave us some contact details? So does anyone have any burning questions that you haven't already talked yourself out tonight? At the right at the back there, thank you.
I'm not really sure if it's appropriate for me to speak at this point, I'm from Waterfall Close, and it's currently got planning application in on the green space behind it. The local residents have put in an objection because the green space was supposed to be a buffer zone, and we've talked today about how these local like sort of green spaces help with the wild life corridors and things like that. But it's really to try and highlight how Norton, I'm from Grace Park, sorry, and I'm dying blind, sorry. It's to highlight how Norton has been real, and the surrounding area has been really built on and built on and built on in the last couple of years, 200 plus houses at least have been built in that area, and we just feel that every last scrap of green area that you're only here to talk about tonight, but larger areas, have been built on where they can to profit rather than a need benefit. I'm not sure if it's appropriate for me to say that at this moment in time, but...
Absolutely, fine, I mean, I don't know the area myself personally, obviously I can ask one of my colleagues as indicated, like to try to say something, but we will certainly get back to you.
Sorry, I missed the name of the road that you said you live on. Waterfall Close.
Yeah, can Steve, oh, sorry. Can I ask Steve there, it's the Grace Park Ward. Yes, there is currently a live planning application for development on the land adjacent to Norton Free Church of England Primary School, which is the back of Waterfall Close, where the land comes from. The application is now live, it's on the council website, which you're probably aware of, and the deadline for responses, for comments and representations is the 10th of December. The issue behind this lies, well, there is an issue that lies behind this, which I think you wanted to raise, is that under the draft local plan, which is currently in draft form, but is in a published format, that particular site, the map shows it has urban green space, is it marked as urban green space. However, we understand that from the council officers that deal with the Sheffield Plan, they say that that was an error. We are, as all the councillors, we are challenging that. We have, yesterday councillor Murrough and I put in an objection to the planning application itself, we have been liaising with the officers in the, that deal with the Sheffield Plan, expressing our concern that it is an error, that they claim it is an error in a document that's been now in the public domain, so we're challenging that strongly. And we're putting an objection to the planning application itself alongside that, and continuously challenge the issue with the, you know, the sort of, well, to my mind, a U-turn on the redesignation as urban green space, because as you say, that piece of land, according to the historic records, has never been developed. Under the existing unitary development plan, it was never developed. It went in, as I say, on the map, marked as urban green space, and we're challenging that, so. But I think one part of the way to, while the application is still live, is to register any comments on the council planning portal, and to do a search for, well, if you do a search for Norton Lane or Norton Church of England Free Primary School, then people can put in a representation on the planning application.
Cracking, thank you very much indeed, Steve. Okay, any further questions? Crikey, everyone must be, oh, here we go.
Hello, Nathan Edwards from Grace Park Ward. Currently in the local plan, there is singular designation for a local green space, for Bolhill Woods, and I just wondered if there was support for further local green spaces from councillors across the wards, because it seems to me that it's a good way in planning terms at least for protecting a lot of these green spaces, and there hasn't been any in Sheffield until this one, and given that there are designations in the triangle within the MPPF, it would seem a good way to really look at some of our local green spaces and provide them that extra level of protection if they need. You can see back. There we go. So yeah, yeah, you're right, and as part of the housing that we're going to be building down the city centre, green space has been included in it. From what I've seen, it's being insisted on with virtually every development, because we recognise the importance of it. None of us wants to live in grey concrete cities anymore, even if it's in the centre. Certainly to break out towards suburbs, it's already there, and we need to make sure we protect it.
Sorry, you must understand, it's not new green spaces.
No, no, no.
Designated, look, this is it, yeah, and we have them, we need to make sure they're protected.
Okay, thank you, and councillor Murrough, just one of you.
Yeah, thank you for raising that question, that's something that we've been picking up on for a number of years now, that it should be retained as open space. And coming back to what the lady at Waterfall Close said, we are very supportive of green spaces and for green spaces to be retained, and that's why we've objected to the one that is being classified as being housing now, when it clearly wasn't in the local plan. And any other green spaces like Bolhills, that is one we will support fully.
Yeah, okay, I'll call it to a halt for my colleagues, any questions for this, thank you.
Thanks, thank you. Yeah, so I've been working on the steering group for the local plan for the last three years, and that was something that we were really keen on getting in there at the very beginning, and a kind of a case study of this was the Althorpe development, which was classified as a brownfield site, but in my opinion, very tenuous circumstances, it never actually been developed, but it had a road through it, which, there was plans in like the 60s to develop it, and for some reason, that meant it could be called a brownfield site. But of the whole area of all Althorpe, it's kind of divided into, I think, four spaces, so the one that has been developed controversially, you know, that's gone. But on the back of that, the rest of that site has been designated as a green space, so it is protected, and we made sure that the social and biodiversity value of the land was what was important, and so if there was a space that was used by people, that had a value and was worth keeping, as well as, you know, whatever wildlife and ecology was thriving there. Thank you very much, Simon.
Thank you, any further questions?
I'm sorry, just, I wasn't quite sure about the money stuff you talked about earlier on, it seems astonishing that there would be £55 left in the pot, and I didn't quite catch what Netheredge were getting, so I'm just asking.
Okay, so yes, apologies if that wasn't clear, so the money that there is, is money to be allocated within the financial year, so we would expect that to happen. It's quite normal in terms of the work that we do, that a lot of the spend happens at the back end of the year, as we've kind of looked at projects and assessed what's possible. It's been a bit more tricky for us within the council this year, because we've had two of the periods where we can't make decisions because of an election happening, so obviously we had the local elections, and then normally we would have got on faster than we could because there was then the general election. So we do expect to spend all of that money on priorities within those wards within the year, and we will continue to keep coming back to these meetings.
And I'm assuming there are already some bids in, some applications are into that, it's not all available, well, it might still be, but...
So we have the ward pot process, which is kind of open for applications, and other things are projects that we look at with ward councillors based on their kind of knowledge of the wards, so within Netheredge, ward councillors are very keen to look at some need for development within Mount Pleasant Park, and really decided that parks is a priority, but what we'll be able to do at the next meeting, because we've done a bit more assessment of the options and the costs, is to be able to give a bit more detail of that.
I suppose the other thing to say is that because we don't have local elections next year, we won't have that period during May. And also, in the last year's budget, the funding for local area committees was put into the main budget before it was kind of renewed every year, whereas this now forms part of the base budget of the council. So we have a little bit more certainty in terms of having those funds from the next year, and as I say, we can hit the ground running early doors with that, because as I say, we don't all have to go around and knock on doors for six weeks. But, okay, thank you, any further questions? Okay, that's great, well, as I say, I've been told myself tonight. Oh, sorry, you've got one more question?
Sorry, a follow-up question from Lindy's question.
Okay.
Is all the money allocated generally just a capital project? Because one of the issues we tend to find is actually sustaining projects once they're in the ground, or can you apply for revenue as well?
Yeah, so in terms of the £100,000 that comes from the Lack, that is not only for capital, that could be anything you like, as I say, it is just a one-off every year though, so what we can't do is commit to anything.
So what we can't do is commit to anything beyond the year. The ward pot similarly is, can also be spent on whatever you like. There is, yeah, so that's, that's to say that the money that's within the local area committee. Okay, I, oh, go on, I'll have you as the last...
Is that okay? Just quickly, it's just an invitation to anybody because obviously we don't know whether we'll see you before Christmas. So on Sunday, London Road ERF Economic Recovery Fund, they're delivering their first project, which is a mural artist, street art by Peaches Art, Alderson Copock, and that's from one o'clock and they just asked me to announce it. Self, I mean, our LACs will distribute, the post is not ready till tomorrow morning, so otherwise we would have bought that. So I thought I'd just put it out there and there will be a drag and dance from the Chinese community all the way from London Road and also some Asian drumming and some food to just celebrate their first hard work. So just pointing out that.
Cracking, thank you. Well, thank you all very, very much indeed for coming. I can just reiterate, if you do want to get further details on the kind of next step we're going to be taking with this, and you're not obviously one of the parts of one of the organisations, do let one of the staff know, Dave or Sarah or anyone who's on the tables with you, that we'll make sure that you get those further details once we move on to the next phase of this. The next South Local Area Committee public meeting will be on the 18th of February, is it Beechfield Green, is it? Is it Gledus Valley?
Yeah.
So we don't have a venue for that, but say, 18th of February 2025. Thank you all indeed, very much indeed for coming along. Thank you all very much indeed for taking part in the early part of the meeting. Have a safe journey home.